Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Okay, on council's agenda tonight, there are four resolutions that are approving the disposition of records. One from the accounts and finance office, community development controller, and the city clerk's office.
Mayor.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to start with our first resolution authorizing the proper city officials to enter an agreement, the amount of $50,000 with TruMed Systems to provide a vaccine management control system. Now, this grant is paid for by an immunization grant from the state of Pennsylvania. If you have any questions, we have our esteemed guest here tonight, Hank Radoski. Do you have any questions regarding that?
Is this something you always had?
No, this is actually a state-of-the-art computerized generated refrigeration unit. So it's actually, it does things, what we have compared to what we have and what this does. Right now, we have a large refrigerator and everything's done manually. So if we enter something in there, we have to write on a piece of paper. We have to check the temperatures twice a day. If there was a power outage, we would have a backup generator for that. So of course, we always call it like two o'clock in the morning if you're at a wedding. We have to run down and make the correction, take the vaccine someplace else. So this system not only is for accurate storage, is for inventory management, and for safety. Because everything you put in it is a QR code. So you scan it, so that knows exactly what's in there. You take something out, you scan it, it knows what's gone in. So you're doing all your, instead of, once again, use through inventory. Open the refrigerator, take the box out, count each one. This is a computer, it has a screen, everything's, whatever you want to do, you can any type of data you want.
Eliminates human error.
Yeah, it's a safety feature, truly is.
Thanks.
Second, authorizing Mark Barrett, grant coordinator, approve the city's agent, as the city's agent, any all notices, awards, and contracts the city must undertake as owner of the city bridges through the PennDOT reimbursement agreement system via PennDOT's ECMS system. Third, authorizing the appropriate officials to submit a $3 million multimodal transportation fund grant application funded by the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the South Main Street Streetscape Improvement Project. Now, in your packet, if you go back towards the back, it actually tells you what that's going to involve, the streets that are involved, and what's included in that Streetscape project. If you have any questions regarding that.
So it's from, like, all of South Main Street down from Public Square going, how far down?
Okay, I can't hear you.
How far down South Main Street?
How far down?
Yeah.
It says right here, Tony, it goes South Street to Hazel Street.
South Street to Hazel Street.
No, Mayor, Mayor, it goes farther if you see that. It goes from South Street to Hanover Street, which is the second section of Hazel, they know. So it runs, it basically runs from, there was a previous South Main Street project
Right.
several years ago, runs from that and from south all the way down.
Right, continuation of that then, right. So it's consistent like trees and new-
Yes, and all the same stuff.
New lamp posts and things like that?
And infrastructure like-
Wonderful.
Yeah, let me elaborate for you. It says, "South Street to Hazel, portions of the project will include the following improvements: new concrete sidewalks, curbs, sidewalk connections, crosswalks, and paving. Also ADA accessibility improvements such as curb cuts. Sidewalk detectable warning surfaces for the ADA ramps will be replaced. In addition, the street lighting, benches, bicycle racks, and garbage receptacles will be installed along the trees planted to improve the overall quality." Now, the Hazel to Hanover Street portion of the project improvements will include milling and paving of the roadway and ADA ramps only. So there's two parts of that? One is, pardon me?
So no trees on that part then? No.
Okay.
Hopefully in the future, we can do more trees.
Yeah, the fourth resolution I'm pulling for tonight, so that's off the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Any more questions for the Mayor?
That's good.
No? Thank you, Mayor. Council presentations, Councilman Brooks?
Yes, I, matter of fact, just got a text from someone on Hudson Street. So Charlie, PPNL emergency crews are last night removing a pine tree, but they left big branches all over the sidewalk. And I was wondering, is PPNL going to go back and remove them? Or is that something DPW will do? So I texted him back and said, "I'll let you know."
PPNL doesn't.
Okay.
They should be back tomorrow. When was that last night?
Yeah, it was last night.
They should be back.
Okay. Sounds good.
If they aren't, have the person to call me, I'll check with them.
They'll do, thank you. Nothing else, Mike?
Anything more to it?
Yeah, just a couple. Charlie and Bill, just also too, I've had more and more people again ask me about the light on the boulevard again, exit two. I just have a, have a little note here. A couple people called, said that they were almost involved with, you know, collisions, wants to know what we're doing, if there's anything going on. My thought process is, I know we visited this many times, three, four times. I don't know, maybe, maybe we can take a look at perhaps getting Marty Flynn involved? I don't know. But maybe we can, we can take a look at that if, if you don't mind. Also, the new fire hydrants that were replaced up in the district, just, we need the curbs to be painted red. I believe they're, you know, indicating that it's, it's a fire hydrant. Do we, do we paint the curbs red? So, you know, the 15 feet or something to that effect?
I'll check.
Yeah.
Is it a traffic issue or a qualification of the pipe?
No, no.
Traffic issue?
I-
I think you're talking traffic.
Yeah, probably, probably traffic. Like I said, the, the new, yeah, the new hydrants, they were installed, which was great. It's just that I, I thought maybe we should have the, the curbs painted, painted red for the, to stay 15 feet away. And some grass cutting, again, Charlie. Coming down North Main, right near Chestnut Street there. We cut it about four or five weeks ago. It's getting really high on the right-hand side, coming down the hill. And then as you turn on Johnson Street, there's an area there, I don't know if it's ours or if it's the redevelopment authority or the counties, but that's getting pretty high as well. If we can just check that out, please, I appreciate it. And that's all I have. Mike, thank you.
Councilman Barrett, anything today?
I just want to start by thanking Charlie and his staff. The Health Department's been fantastic responding to these calls, the high grass calls that we have. We all get them, and they've been doing a great job on that. I just wanted to say thank you very much for helping out with those. East Main, Scott, to Mayock has a few holes there. When the guys are out patting, if they could maybe take a look. I don't know about the other end, John, but that upper end has a few holes on East Main Street that need a little attention there. Yale Street storm drains, Mike, you and I talked about that. And I know there's an email floating around on that. If we could have somebody, whether it be, I don't know who would be the appropriate person to meet up with the WBSA representative?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, they called me up and they explained, we need, we don't do concrete work kind of thing. I don't know why they just don't do it. But they're saying, "We will do it in conjunction with the city if they're willing to," because they know that they're going to lose the sidewalk.
Yes.
And they're saying, "If the city's willing to go that route, they'll, they'll do everything they can. And if the city, you know, fixes the sidewalk, they'll be fine with that."
It's a very unique situation. There are three storm drains together.
Yeah, it's like really odd.
Right together, and they drain under the sidewalk. So to repair them, they have to take the sidewalk out, obviously, to get to what has to be done. And then somebody's got to come and put the sidewalks back, and the concrete sidewalks there. So I guess there's a little bit of a stalemate there as to who can meet up and how we can handle that situation. But I know that we do eventually have to do something with it.
I personally talked to the guy that installs them, and he basically said the same thing to me that his boss did. So we can gather that together. You know, I could get them, call Charlie, contact Charlie.
Maybe have somebody meet WBSA on site there, take a look at what needs to be done there to correct that situation.
Now, are they collapsed, Bill?
They're sinking. They're starting to sink.
I think I did see the picture.
Yeah, they're sinking in. Part of, there's an opening alongside, but you could probably put your foot in there if you happen to step in the wrong spot. So they do need some attention. The other thing is, I sent an email out, I think, Mike, I sent it to you as well, and I got a couple calls on parking at alleyways. Now, there are dozens and dozens of alleyways in the city that are no more than 10 feet wide. And they're designed to access to the rear of the homes, garages, or, in some cases, DPW trucks. They do trash pickup through the alleys. And also, fire equipment if they need to get to the rear of properties. And I had two calls in the last month where persons have parked on those alleys, the paved portions of the alleyways, partially blocking, one, a DPW truck couldn't get through, and the other one, they were concerned about if there was a fire, if somebody could get in there. I did a little research. A lot of municipalities have in their parking code, you cannot park on the paved, improved portion of a single-lane alleyway. They're not designed to do that. It's not a parking, and it's a safety hazard if you do park in there. So I wanted to, and I sent it to Tim, but Tim isn't here tonight. I wanted to see if we can include it. Scranton has it in their ordinance, just an amendment to our ordinance, or a section to include in there that you can't park on the improved portion of a single-lane alleyway or a lane. Minden Place is another example in the back there. People are parking in the back there. And God forbid, if you had to get back in there with a piece of fire equipment, you're not going to get in there. It's not somebody's private parking. It's designed for access to the rear of the properties. So Mari, maybe if you could remind Tim about that, if we could look at maybe getting that prepared for your consideration, for everyone's consideration. That those alleyways are designed, again, just to provide access to the rear of the properties and not provide parking. So I'd appreciate if we could move forward with that. And speaking of parking, and I know we've had some discussion about that in the past, when you go through these alleyways, you look, the cars that are in yards that have been there for years. And Charlie and I just had a discussion about that. They're a problem for us. They're a problem for us dealing with them, because they are on private property, whether it's in somebody's backyard or alongside the house. But some people don't respond to the notices. We send them an notice, we mark the vehicles and everything, the cars are still there. It seems to be a little bit of concern about going onto somebody's property, removing those. I've got one case where the actual owner of the property is in prison in another county. He doesn't care about letters. He doesn't care about citations. But in the meantime, junk vehicles sit there alongside the property in plain view, and people have to live next to this. I mean, I'm not, I'm talking about junk, not somebody, something that just ran out, junk cars. And we've got to get a position on how we're going to handle these when they've been, they've been notified, they've been cited, and the vehicles still sit there. So do we let them sit there? I don't think so. I think we need to be able to do something about that. So Mari, maybe, Tim, and if you could look at that a little bit further and see what we can do about that. I've got a couple on my plate, and you guys probably have some in mind, I see some heads shaking.
Sure we all do, Bill.
Yeah. Yeah. People don't care. They don't care.
Nope.
And these are, in often cases, grass growing around them, mice living in them, God knows what else. And they're a hazard, and a safety, a health hazard. So I wish that we can move forward and get a plan as to how we're going to address them. Notify the owner. They don't want to get rid of them, then I think that we have the right to go on the property and remove them because they are a health and safety hazard. They're not going to do it. My opinion, anyway.
I, I-
Get an opinion, a legal opinion on that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And that's enough for one night. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Charlie, 118 Walla, Pottle, in front of 118 Walla. The other thing, Mayor, we were all at Nathan Gray Park this past week, and it really looks nice. We're all there, all of us here, I believe we're there yet. I did have a request that day, and then I looked afterwards. Vents, they're requesting benches. I've seen your citizens go down there. And I looked around, there's only a couple, but they requested more benches. If we have any, it'd be nice, maybe paint them orange, you know, put them in the park.
Yeah, Mike, we, we put four down there that day.
Okay.
The day of the unveiling. So we didn't put four, but there were coming. We're going to put some up by the upper level playground underneath the trees and stuff. We'll shade it. So we're in the process of putting more there. We did have four that day, four requested. They're not painted orange, but they are additional benches.
Are they the metal ones?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. The other question I have, and this has happened for, you know, a while, and I'm sure we all have this. You're driving out of a street, I'm going to give you an example, because I know you know where it's at. Coming out of Barney Street at Wood. The bush that's right there, on the right outside, on property. And it obstructs your view of what's coming down Hanover Street. And I've had that complaint several years, several times in the past few years. But now the next one is the one at Boche's House, Rita and Old River Road. On that corner, the left-hand corner, if you're coming out of Rita. You can't, you cannot see at all. And I'm like, well, I don't even know what we could do about that. Request it from the homeowner? I don't, I don't know.
I know the three years up.
I actually found the left side right in the corner.
Yeah.
I actually had someone call me about that, and I had the response on, I think, on my email. Bill Harris I talked to. And I think it's only allowed to be such and such a height, like, there's an inch or, you know, whatever it was. I'd have to look and see, but I can ask Bill for you tomorrow if I don't have it.
Yeah.
Because somebody had called complaining about it.
That same one?
A couple, they're all over. I don't remember where they called me for it, but I asked him, and he did give me the height of it.
Okay, okay.
So I will double-check with him tomorrow.
No, is that like through the traffic committee?
No, it'd be, that'd be a, probably a citation. Probably, you know, if we complete, they're probably doing an EDA on it.
Yeah. Yeah, just ask them to cut it back, you know?
Easiest and fastest way to do it now, right?
Right, right.
If we had to do something further, then we'd ask the source.
I mean, it is. That, that one on Rita is bad. I get several complaints.
When you go down State Street, there's those bushes right there, you can't see.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Mike, Mike, just one more. I, just Charlie and Mayor, I do want to thank you for North Washington Street. Took a little bit to get that milled and paved, but it, it looks like it's just about done. It's really, really nice. Had, had some feedback on that, some positive feedback. So I just wanted to pass that along as well. So thank you for that. Thanks.
Anything else? Council? Good, most good, Jared.
I'll have to check what he told me.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm just curious.